Good evening, I'd like to call to order the Lake Havasu City Council Regular Meeting on Tuesday, December 11th, 2018 at 6:00 PM. We will now have an invocation by Susan Waldron from Mount Olive Lutheran Church, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by the Builders Club from Telusis.
Before we pray, I'd like to thank Lake Havasu and their opportunity to be just a ministerial association become a family.
That does not always happen every place, so bless you all for doing that and being open. Now let us pray. May God send down to those who hold office in our Lake City, Lake Havasu City Council in the state and the world, the Spirit of wisdom, charity, and justice for all, knowing that they have a great purpose in their opportunity here within their job. We ask them to faithfully serve in their positions of public trust to promote the welfare of all peoples through Jesus Christ our Lord. May God the Father grant us grace, may God the Son fill us with love, may God the Holy Spirit keep us in peace. Amen.
And I'll have the Pledge of Allegiance led by Jeffrey Norton.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And Jeffrey, if you wanted to tell us a little bit about the Builders Club at Telusis.
Hello, I am Builders Club President Jeffrey Norton. Builders Club serves the community and helps create leadership skills in students. We currently have six members in our club, but we are still continuing to grow. This Friday, we'll be packaging Stop the Bleed kits at the hospital. If there are any volunteer opportunities needed, please reach out to us. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for being here. And for those in the audience and at home, we're going to invite different clubs and organizations throughout the community to lead us in the pledge each meeting and tell us a little bit about what they do in the community. So thank you for being here and being the first one, and we appreciate it. We'll now have the roll call.
Councilmembers Jenny Koch, Gordon Groth.
Here.
David Lane.
Here.
Michelle Lynn.
Here.
Donna McCoy.
Here.
Kal Sheehy.
Here.
Jim Dolan.
Here.
All right, we'll have our first call to the public. This is an open call to the public for citizens wishing to address the council on issues within the jurisdiction of the city. Your comments will be limited to five minutes or less. If you wish to address an item that's already on today's agenda, we ask that you wait until that agenda is there so we can have a two-way conversation. At the conclusion of the call to the public, the council may respond to criticism or direct staff, but otherwise, we can't have a two-way conversation during this part of the meeting. With that being said, would anyone like to address City Council at the call to the public? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the call to the public. The next item on the agenda is the selection of a Vice Mayor. At this point, we would have nominations from the City Council members to have someone represent us as our Vice Mayor.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I would like to nominate David Lane for the position.
Thank you. Councilmember Lane, would you be willing to accept the nomination?
I would. I don't want to take it from somebody else if they want it, but I would be more than happy to do it. I have the time, so absolutely.
Thank you. Are there any other nominations? Yeah, do we...
A second.
So we have a motion and a second to nominate Councilmember David Lane as Vice Mayor. Is there any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor? I would like to just add that I think it is important that the position be an individual that is able to attend things in your absence, or, you know, if something comes up. I know that there's so much going on in the city that oftentimes you are unable to attend everything, so the role of the Vice Mayor is very important. I served it once, I loved it, and I think David will be great at it.
Thank you. All right, is there any discussion, any further discussion? All right, well, I believe we're ready to vote.
Motion carries six to zero.
Thank you. Congratulations, Councilmember Lane.
Thank you.
All right, the next item on the agenda is the Consent Agenda. Do any members of the council wish to remove any item for separate discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Motion?
Yes.
I move to approve the Consent Agenda as posted.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, I believe we're ready to vote. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is Correspondence, Communications, Petitions, Announcements, and the City Manager Report. The first item is 8.1, which is the Fiscal Year 2018-19 First Quarter Contracted Service Agency Reports. I believe, Chief Doyle?
Mayor, Council, we have two contracts that we manage at the Police Department, one being the Haven Center, the other being the Western Arizona Humane Society. The two contracts is we contract with Haven for $73,274, and that contract is for victims of sexual assault and abuse, for not interviews, forensic interviews, as well as saying exams. We contract with the WAS to the tune of about $250,000, and that's to take the animals that our animal control officers pick up and impound them. They'll hold licensed animals for five days, they'll hold unlicensed animals for three days prior to them becoming the property of the Humane Society. And in the attachment would be the quarterly reports from both agencies.
Thank you.
If you have any questions.
Do any members of the council have any questions for Chief Doyle? All right, thank you. Next item is 8.2, to announce vacancies on the Lake Havasu City Boards, Committees, and Commissions. Ms. Williams?
Mayor, City Council, there are a couple of vacancies on Lake Havasu City Boards, Committees, and Commissions. The following is a listing of those vacancies. Airport Advisory Board, one regular pilot member, one alternate non-pilot member. Board of Adjustment, three regular members, and three alternate members. Applications are available in the City Clerk's office, and they are also available on the city's website.
Thank you. Item 8.3 is the City Manager's Report. Mr. Knutson?
Hi, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of the council. I'll wait for the PowerPoint to show up. There it is on the screen. Thank you, Stephen. I'd like to start by expressing our appreciation to the Leonard Bridge Yacht Club and thank them for donating $1,658 to our youth that make up our Lake Havasu City Department Explorer Post. This is an annual fundraising effort by the yacht club to assist our police explorers. The donation is used to cover travel and expenses for their various competitions and activities. Thank you very much. I'd also like to extend a thank you to our volunteers that have recently signed up to give rides to our seniors at the Senior Center for the Senior Center Lunch Program. Lake Havasu City has supported the senior lunch program for many years by providing transportation at no cost. Recently, due to a lack of volunteers, we couldn't provide the seniors with the rides they needed to the senior center. However, thanks to the efforts of our Human Resources Department and our Havasu Mobility staff, the city has six new volunteer drivers, a total of six volunteer drivers, and we have resumed a normal schedule. The current ridership is averaging about 60 to 70 a week, and that is increasing with the winter visitors that are now in town. Impressive numbers this last weekend from the Household Hazardous Waste Day. It turned out to be a huge success in terms of the amount of materials that were collected. We had over 570 cars that attended the event, and it was located at our Public Works Maintenance Yard. In four hours, Republic Services collected nearly 7,000 pounds of tires, 12,000 pounds of electrical waste, computers, monitors, and such, 2,000 gallons of paint, 400 gallons of used oil, 55 gallons of antifreeze, 55 gallons of waste gasoline, more than 1,200 linear feet of fluorescent light bulbs. All these items that were collected are being recycled responsibly and will not make its way to the landfill. We appreciate the public's patience with the event. One picture there is the extent of the line that was outside of the Public Works Yard that actually went down to, up to, up and around Industrial Avenue, up to Campbell Cove, nearly a mile long. And we appreciate the public's patience with the event. The turnout was far bigger than anticipated, and the wait to drop off the items was far too long. Because it's been so long since the last event of this kind, we essentially collected about 10 years of materials. The next event is scheduled for December of next year, in 2019, and the promise will be much, the process will be much smoother for the public at the next event. And lastly, identify a few upcoming holiday events, including this Friday and just a few days, on December 14th, will be the Annual Community Dinner. It'll take place at the Community Center. We'll have a seating at 4:00 PM and another seating at 6:00 PM. This is a free event, and we welcome the public to come out and help us and participate and celebrate the events, our holiday events. New Year's Eve Under the Bridge takes place on Monday, December 31st, from 6:00 to 8:00 PM. It'll take place on the stage under the London Bridge. And then lastly, to note, the Annual Camaros on the London Bridge will take place on Saturday, January 26th, from 8:00 AM till 8:30 for one half hour. So we appreciate the public's patience with that event as well. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, that concludes my report. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to address them.
Thank you. Do any councilmembers have any questions for the City Manager? Thank you. All right, we will move on to our public hearings. The first item is 9.1, Adopt Ordinance Number 18-1210, amending the Lake Havasu City Code Chapter 2.70, Capital and Equipment Planning, Chapter 8.24, Sale of Certain Public Property, and Title 14, Zoning Regarding the Capital Improvements Program. Ms. Olson?
Thank you, Mayor, Council. For the record, Jill Olson, Administrative Services. This item is the adoption of the ordinance that was introduced to you at your last meeting, and it's primarily made of cleanup items in the code, correcting titles, correcting department names, and most prevalent is the correction of the, or change of the CIP to the Capital Improvement Plan from the other variety of names it had. So with that, I can answer any questions.
Thank you. Do any members of the council have any questions for Ms. Olson? All right, this is a public hearing. Does anyone in the public have any comments for the City Council? Seeing none, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Motion?
Yes.
I move to adopt ordinance number 18-1210, amending the Lake Havasu City Code, Chapter 2.70, Capital and Equipment Planning, Chapter 8.24, Sale of Certain Public Property, and Title 14, Zoning Regarding the Capital Improvements Program.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, we're ready to vote. Thank you. Our next public hearing is item 9.2, Adopt Ordinance Number 18-1209, amending the zoning classification and district boundary for APN 107-78-004, 145 Park Avenue, from C1 Limited Commercial District to C2 PD General Commercial Plan Development District, to allow a car wash and height exception from the maximum building height of 25 feet for an architectural element up to a height of 34 feet. Mr. Schmeling?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Property is located at 145 Park Avenue, in the southern portion of the community. Here you can see it, it's just south of Highway 95, in the area of the Aquatic Center and Rotary Park. Just a little historical background, this property was originally part of a plan development from 1993, MCO Properties. We talked a little bit about it at your last meeting. Here's the site plan from that PD. You see the Aquatic Center here, the site that was rezoned at your last meeting, the hotel site, and the property that we're speaking of this evening is right here in this particular Across the street from this site, we have a, what amounts to an old water tank site. It's being currently used as a city maintenance yard facility with the wall around it. To the south side of the property, we have a, an electrical substation with a similar wall around it. This is the zoning in the immediate area, and since last, the last meeting, there were several questions with regard to height. I modified this slide a little bit, just not only giving you the zoning districts, the surrounding area, but also the height. So you can see here, this is the Aquatic Center. Zone P1 allows 30 feet maximum building height. P1 here as well. Here's the Island Body Beach District, if you will, or Island Body Beach, or Body Beach area that we are familiar with along the shoreline. This is the parcel that was zoned, rezoned at your last meeting, allows 40 feet. Here's a C1 area, 25-foot maximum building height, and across the highway, we have a variety of residential uses, multifamily, mixed-use neighborhood. Here we have residential multifamily as well, and the corresponding heights. This is the subject property. The height in the C1 district, as well as the C2 district, is 25 feet. One of the reasons that they're asking for the plan development is because this is the only way in which they can, someone can request a height exception. Typical exceptions requested through the PD process include height, obviously, as well as sometimes parking standards are requested to be reduced, or landscaping, depending on the site and the particular location. One of the benefits of the plan development for you as potential approvers of this is that you have the ability to review and approve the site plan. So this is the site plan that was submitted by the applicant. You can see the dark outline of the building here. And since most of you don't read these every day, I took the opportunity to add some information on this. The area that's enclosed with the circle is the specific area that is where the height exception is being requested to 34 feet. It's an 18-by-18 architectural element. You'll see it in some of the images later in the presentation. But also, I've outlined the setbacks from any property lines. For example, this is Highway 95, this is Park Avenue. The building currently is being proposed to be set back 88 feet from the Highway 95 right away, 47 feet from the adjacent property to the north. There's a little area here that it's difficult to see, but it's a porticusure that basically covers the first row of vehicles, and that's approximately 13 feet from the property line. That's probably the closest structure to the northern property line. Here you see in the front from Park Avenue, it's 138 feet from that, and it's 95 feet from the wall of the substation on the south side. Here's the set of building elevations that you're also approving as part of this plan The area in the circle, once again, is the only area that's being requested for the height exception. This is the 18-by-18, give or take, architectural element, if you will, that goes up to 34 feet in height. The rest of this building meets the C2 height standards at 25 feet. This is what you would see, this elevation is what you would see standing on the vacant lot to the north, so if you're looking south. This is what you would see if you're looking from standing on Highway 95. So once again, the elevation, the architectural feature. If you're standing in the, at the substation on the south, here is that same architectural feature, and this is what the layout of the building looks like. And last but not least, if you're standing on Park Avenue, this is what you'll, this is what you'll see. I've got a couple of pictures here, images that were submitted as part of the application by the developer. These are examples of other surf-through, drive-through facilities, car wash facilities that they have in other locations. Here is a visual end of it from the north end, a daytime photo and an evening photo of the same location, but this is just to give you an idea of what the prototypical structure looks like, as well as the color palette that they traditionally select. With that, that concludes my portion of the presentation. I know that the applicant is here, and they also have a presentation, but if you have any questions of me, I'd be happy to answer those at this point.
Do any members of the council have any questions specifically for Stuart before we open up to the applicant?
Mr. Mayor, if I may just ask a question?
Yes.
Stuart, this looks familiar to me, so I kind of went back, and you can tell me if I'm wrong or if I'm right, but in July of 2017, didn't we just rezone this exact parcel from C1 PD to C1?
That is correct. This was the first, let me go back to that, actually. This was the first of all the parcels to remove themselves from the PD. Once the applicant came forward and removed this from the PD, then we saw the rest of these come in, all as one application, I believe it was in July, I want to say. They removed themselves from the PD, so the PD totally sees us to exist in this area.
Okay, and then, the way I understand it, C1 to C2 is basically, C1 is a lighter commercial-type, commercial buildings and office buildings and that kind of thing. C2 is more of, like the car washes, storage facilities, that kind of thing, a more heavier industrial than, or commercial than what C1 is?
Yes, generally speaking. The C1 district, if you look through the permitted use table, includes 21 uses. Counted them today just because I assumed someone would ask that question. The typical uses that you find in a C1 district are your traditional retail, office, restaurant, those types of uses. C2, on the other hand, allows 37 commercial uses, so it allows those 21 uses and an additional 16 uses. And yes, the C2 district is heavier commercial. It gets into things such as storage units, display, sale, and maintenance of vehicles of any type, whether it's watercraft, cars, or RVs, boat storage, those types of heavier commercial uses. So yes, that is the exact difference.
Thank you.
All right, do any other members of the council have any questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Stu, could you answer a question? I'm not really familiar with a lot with planning and zoning. Is there certain requirements for the landscaping, that requirements in the area for a property like this?
Yes, we have a section that deals specifically with landscaping and commercial. C1 and C2 aren't going to be held to any different standards as far as landscape. It's just a percent of the site overall.
Okay, I had the opportunity to speak to somebody that was representing, and they had given me some information that they were going beyond what they needed to, for the expectations for the landscaping. Can you go further on that?
Well, I could, however, this was submitted to us as part of this PD. We staff has not done any design review, so I don't know at this point whether it meets the parking standards or it meets the landscape standards, so anything that they told you as a result of that, it may or may not be true. It appears to me, looking at the site, that yes, they definitely exceed the landscape standards that we would hold for a traditional C2 application.
Right, the applicant's here, does the applicant want to make a presentation?
I have a question.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, sorry, I knew it was this. Quick question. If we do approve it, C2 to PD, C2 PD, C2 is, you know, they could put a storage facility in, is it my understanding that we're approving this specific site plan if this, if they decide not to do this and say they want to put a storage facility, and it's not, now all of a sudden, C2, and they can't use the uses of what a normal C2?
Yes, you are correct. One of the reasons that developers traditionally go through the plan development application is to give the council a level of comfort as to what can be developed. So for example, if they were just rezoning from C1 to C2, you would essentially be allowing any one of those 37 uses in the category of C2. So at that point, you don't, you don't really know what's going to happen. They could do anything from a retail all the way up to storage units, correct. However, when they go through the PD, they are showing you what they're going to build. So this is what they, this is what they're going to build. Now, obviously, they still have to go through staff design review, as well as building permits and grading and everything else, but if anything changes from that, they have to come back to you to get that approved.
Okay. And then my other question was, is my understanding that when presented to the city, they were given basically two options. They could do, change it to C2 PD and submit the plans and go through it this way, or they could request multiple, rezone it to multi-use. Is that the case, or is this the only way they could put this specific business there?
Well, you don't want to suggest that there's just two options. They have a whole range of options, but let's, I'll try to explain it this way. The general plan has some statements that relate to the future land use of the area. The land use designated for the area is resort-related, and this is a description up here of what the primary and the secondary uses go, that are suggested for the resort-related area. There are several zoning districts that could accommodate that specifically. Is C2 the best zoning district? Probably not, but in their specific case, the use that they're proposing, C2 is probably the best for them. Are there other, are there other zoning designations that implement the general plan? Sure. So I'll just give you an example here. It talks about service, commercial, retail uses, boat rentals, sales, repairs, hotels, motels, and restaurants. Sort of sounds like some of the uses that are listed here in the C2 general description. However, if you go to the same resort-related designation and you look at what the general description is for mixed use, it suggests retail, office, service, resort-related facilities, multifamily, hotels, motels. It really almost sounds like a better fit, however, the applicant chose not to go with that because they don't intend on using the property for residential purposes. They only, their only interest is commercial. That's the reason, I believe that's the reason they asked for C2, as opposed to some other zoning district.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Or if the applicant would like to give a presentation?
Thank you. Councilmembers, Mayor, Vice Mayor, thank you very much for giving me the opportunity to address you tonight, tell you a little bit about who we are and what our company is and our desired use for this property. So we own the property at 145 Park Avenue. We've purchased that, we own it. It was purchased, my understanding is it was purchased after being on the market for the better part of 10 years, off and on again. Nobody has desired to build there, to buy it, or to develop that property. The property is zoned, it's zoned commercial. If we could go to the slides, can we do that?
Yeah, I have them up, and it's giving me a blank. Hmm. Is it taking its time loading, maybe? Got blue square. Yeah, what did you have that? Put it back in there. Try it again. Oh, there it is. All right.
If we can go to, if we can go to slide, slide three.
There you go. Not there, hold on. Oh, there it is. Alright.
If we can go to, if we can go to slide, slide three.
There you go.
Uh, as you can see from the property, um, at this point in time, we have, we have no neighbors. Uh, there's nothing developed down there. We have, our neighbor to the south is an electrical, uh, transmission facility. Our neighbor towards the highway is the highway. We have no neighbor that way. And to the west, our neighbor is a city yard, a storage yard. We have only, uh, one adjacent neighbor and this project in no way is gonna obstruct any views for that adjacent neighbor who at this point has not elected to develop the property, so it's, it's bare dirt at this point. So we have no neighbors. We also, um, have two, what you may not know is we have two large uh, public utility easements that burden that property. So next to the highway, there's 50 feet wide of public utility easements that go along the highway. And then next to the electric transmission facility, there's another 50 feet that go in that direction. And so there's a very limited types of uses that can make use of this particular property. And we were able to put together a site plan that didn't obstruct any of those easements, but yet still allowed us to meet all the elements that we needed. So with, with all of that, this is a perfect location for an express car wash in Lake Havasu for several reasons. Not only do we not have any neighbors, but it's also, it's next to a highway which you need to be next to the highway in order to have an ex- a, a successful express car wash. Uh, similar to how you have gas stations and convenience stores up and down the highway. Um, we're at a signalized intersection, but we don't have any access off the highway, so we're not gonna cause any traffic issues off the highway. But because we have the signalized intersection, people can come in around behind off Park Avenue and enter the property. So that's also a huge benefit. It's close to the center of town, so everybody from Havasu can get there and, and at reasonable proximity to the location. Um, we are very good at selecting site locations in other cities. This is our, this would, this, well, we have 15 car washes that are open and we have five that are in process. Um, the car washes that we have that are open, we have them in all types of areas in cities. We have them next to hotels, we have them next to apartment buildings, we have them next to office buildings. We have them next to retail, we have them next to banks. We have absolutely no complaints from any of our neighbors. And, and all the cities that we've been talking to have welcomed us with open arms to come to their city. Uh, we, we provide jobs for the community. We, we're gonna be able to have at least 15 to 20 full-time jobs for the community. Um, we have managers that we need to hire, we're gonna need to hire assistant manager, mechanics. Um, it's gonna be something that we can really help benefit the community as well. Um, a couple, uh, some things that are make us a little bit different than the typical car washes that you see. First of all, we don't have anybody out on the lots drying vehicles. This is not a full-serve car wash or a detailed car wash where you have a bunch of people out drying cars after they come through the tunnel. Our tunnel has, has blowers that blow the water off the vehicle. About 95% of the water gets blown off of the vehicle at that time. Sometimes people bring a little, uh, towel to touch up a little bit of the water, but because we use a reverse osmosis system, the water dries spot-free because we take the minerals out of the water, um, that's used in our process. A few other things that are, that I think are something that you guys should consider when you're thinking about car washes in the future in Havasu. Number one, we, uh, as far as our water usage, we, first of all, we recycle our water and we reclaim our water. We are down to less than 20 gallons per car, uh, as, as far as water usage. We're certified as a certified water user. In the United States, you can get certified, we're certified. I've looked up Lake Havasu, there are no car washes in Havasu that are certified as a waters, as a water saver, or a certified water saver. And there aren't any similar car washes that are considered certified water savers. Another thing that's really important that a lot of people don't know is you don't want vehicles that are dirty when the rain comes, washing off all the gunk from the vehicles into your storm drains. That water eventually makes it to streams, it eventually makes it to the, your, your water that's, that's in your lakes. You do not want that to happen, and so what we do to help prevent that, and there's been partnership, we've partnerships with lots of different cities, I'm gonna show you some of these partnerships, um, is we have what are called clarifier tanks. So when the vehicles go through the tunnel and all the gunk, eh, eh, you know, from the, the, the products that are, get on cars all the way down to uh, fuel and brakes, uh, brake dust, it all goes into what are called clarifier tanks. And when that goes into clarifier tanks, it's captured in the clarifier tanks, and then we remove it to a non-hazardous waste facility. We have trucks that come in, they gather all that gunk up and they take it away. That's the stuff that ends up in your, in your waterways eventually when vehicles have water that, uh, rinses off that gunk and it goes into your waterways. And that's why professional car washing is very helpful for protecting the water quality in your particular areas. Um, can we go to some more slides? Uh, let's go to slide. Yeah, slides, uh, let's go to slides 13 through 19. Well, yeah. Yeah, on the water. Uh, keep going, please. Uh, so we, number one, we can reduce water usage, and number two, we can reduce water pollution. The third thing that we do that, that I haven't seen any other car washes do is we put in a $350,000 system to power our site by the sun. We put solar panels on top of our vacuum canopies. Um, it's a very expensive thing. The payback is like seven years or six years, so a lot of people don't do it. We do it anyway because we think it's good for the environment, and so we power our facilities mostly through solar power. Um, not completely because the car wash is gonna use more power than that. But we, we do use, we spend $350,000 on that system to do that. If you could go to a few of the other cities. Others, these, yes, thank you. Sacramento, if you can go to the next one. San Mateo, Fort Worth. These are cities that have recognized what I've, what I've been explaining about the water issues and the water pollution that have partnered with car washes like us. They've actually, a lot of these cities, they actually have stopped people from washing in their driveways anymore because they don't want that stuff washing into their, into their sewers. And they recognize that this is the best way to keep your waterways from getting, getting pollution in it. So we are a modern express car wash. It's something different than what you have in this community. You do not have something like us. It is a service that the people, once they use it, they are going to really thank you for bringing us to this community. It's, it's, it's a service that we have lots of people who use it. The pe- we get, uh, uh, reviews where people write into us thanking us for coming to their community and how we've actually changed their lives in the way they wash their cars, because people can come in, in a very short period of time, three, four, five minutes, get their car washed for as little as $7 at our cheapest wash. And they can go through and get their car washed. They can get memberships for $19 a month where they can wash unlimited times coming through our car wash. Um, and, and they're in and out of there in like three or four minutes. It really does change the quality of life for people. Last few points I just wanna make is that, is that city staff supports, uh, the recommendation for, for the zone change. There was a question about what, about the C1 versus C2 zoning. There are some uses in C1 that are, are very similar to C2, such as gas station, convenience stores. Our C1, uh, liquor stores or, with drive-throughs would be C1, fast food restaurants, uh, would be C1. Those are all C1. Our use is not gonna be any more burdensome than one of those uses, and the fact that it's a planned development, it allows you to, uh, go through our site plan and tell us, hey, we need more landscaping here. Hey, you need more landscaping over here. Hey, this site plan, you know, it looks good this way, why can't you do this? Um, that's what the city staff has done with us and has worked with us on that. And, and that's the reason why I believe that they're recommending it is because we have done everything that they've asked us to do, um, as far as our site plan and for the PD at this point. Our entire project is a large investment. We spend, um, between, including the land purchase, it'll, we'll be spending $5 million to build this, uh, facility. The architecture is something that we consider to be beautiful architecture. I, I look up and down that highway. I, I hazard to, to, to tell you that I think we're gonna have the nicest looking structure on that highway. Um, there might be others who have those buildings who will disagree with me, and that's okay. I like our building and I think it's gonna be one of the nicest facilities that, that, that you have there. Um, I think it's gonna be something that you, you'd be proud of. Uh, one other thing that's, I think is important to know is that the site is below grade. So off of Highway 95, uh, it's eight feet below grade. So our, our one height feature, which is, is an architectural feature that makes it look nicer, that's why it's there, um, is even, so it's basically eight feet lower than what we're proposing from as far as your viewpoint from the highway. And because we don't have anything else over 22 feet, views are not gonna be obstructed towards the lake. You're gonna be able to see right over, right over everything and you'll be able to see the lake from the highway. I think any argument that, uh, we shouldn't be allowed to go there and put a car wash there is, is really gonna come down to, you know, a not in my backyard kind of an argument. Uh, there, eh, eh, and you can always say that. Somebody can always say, I don't want you next to me, I don't want you to be near me, and, and there's nothing we can do about that. We're always gonna have a neighbor somewhere. And there's always gonna be a neighbor who could say that. But there's no good reason for us not to be there. We're gonna be a good neighbor to whoever's there. We've already increased the property values for anybody in our area based on what we paid for that property. They're gonna do just fine. And nobody else has developed that property, nobody else bought that property. We bought it and we're ready to go and develop it now. If you have any questions, I'm ready to take them.
Does anyone from the council have any questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I just have a quick question. Um, how many car washes did you say that you have around the country?
We have, we have 15 open right now.
Have all the car washes that you opened been successful?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, I have a question about the noise. You mentioned that, uh, you don't have, uh, hand drying, it's all blowers. What, what's the noise impact for that?
Yeah, we, so we have, we use what are called stealth, uh, blowers. They have silencers on them. And so we have sound studies that you, you can't even hear it from about 60 feet away. And the place where the, the, the most noise emits from is the blowers at the exit of the tunnel. The vacuums, you can't even hear those. Um, and again, that, because we use these silencers on the, uh, blowing system, y- you can't even hear it. And the tunnel is gonna be facing towards the highway. So any noise is emitting right to where the highway is where you got all the cars and trucks going by. It's gonna drown out any noise that's there. There's no noise pointing towards a neighbor, uh, in, in any direction. Again, we don't have any neighbors yet, but even to a proposed neighbor someday, there's nothing facing in that direction.
Um, is this business, business model a 24-hour, uh, coin-operated or is it have business hours?
It is not. It's, it's a seven in the morning to nine o'clock at night in the summertime. And it's usually seven in the morning to eight o'clock in the wintertime. Uh, we have a cashier. We have two people stand at the front of the tunnel who are, are preppers, where they kinda prep the car before it goes through the tunnel. And we have somebody walking around cleaning up trash and dealing with any customer service issues. That's it. That's a typical shift. We have 15 to 20 people because we have shifts, um, of people who come in. And we can usually do two full shifts a day. Uh, but that's why we can employ over 15 people and only have four onsite at a given time. Most of the time you won't see them, except for the cashier at the front and when you get around to the front of the tunnel.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I just wanted to comment that, um, you know, the, the structure of it looks very nice. I was going to ask you why you had the, the high part of it, because car washes are typically, cars are lower. But I understand, it's just the design, it's not like you're doing anything up there.
Yeah, it's, it's like this architectural feature you see here. It adds to the car wash feature, so it doesn't look like just a flat, just a flat structure.
And, and I like the fact that, that you are using some of the solar. I think that's, um, that's really great. Um, and, um, you know, I think that, uh, a lot of times we on the council, you know, we're pro-business, so you know, we do care about people that wanna bring business in. However, I know that there's been a lot of, um, debate over, you know, what could in the future, um, be in those locations, so. But, um, from what I'm seeing, uh, unless I hear otherwise, um, I think it's very nice.
So, yeah, and, and you're right, there could be other things in, in that area. There could be office buildings, there could be retail. There could be mixed use. Uh, there's a hotel across the street. We're right next to all of those type of uses in all the other cities that we're at. We're not having any problems with any of those neighbors. They like having us there. It's a nice use to be there. Um, and if anything, we're bringing value to that area. And again, I just remind you that three of our neighbors are a highway,
Right.
a substation and a city yard, on three sides.
One thing I did wanna say, oh, sorry, um, I think we have six car washes here in town. Different levels of, you know, uh, washing, but, um, you know, you always worry about not putting somebody out of work and, and the guys that go around and come to your office or building because you work eight hours a day, coming and washing too, so, you know, those are concerns that, that we have for our citizens also, and other businesses.
I can tell you that I'm not aware that we've ever put a car wash out of business. I'm not sure that's ever happened by, for, because of us.
Any other questions from the council?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Just, I have two questions. One, I'm very sorry, I didn't catch your name at the beginning.
I'm sorry, I might not have said it. My name's Scott Howery, H-O-W-R-Y.
H-O-W-R-Y?
R-Y, yes.
Okay, Mr. Howery, thank you. And the only question I have is, um, how many vehicles per hour are you expecting or per day going through this?
So they, it can fluctuate a lot. I mean, you can get, eh, you know, as little as five to 10 hour, cars an hour, and you could get 50 to 60 an hour. Then the hours, you know, during the day, you have prime washing times. And so those are busy hours, and then you have less busy hours. So it, it's kinda like a bell curve where, you know, in the morning you don't wash as many and it kinda gets, you wash more and then it goes back down at night and you wash less.
I'm sure you have some projections on cars per day for your break-even point, and what, what are you actually expecting?
Yeah, I would say a break, a break-even point would be maybe 250 cars a day for us. That would be a break-even point.
I have a question. Is it pure car wash? There's not like a retail location in there selling anything? It's just mainly just the...
We have, we, we typically have a vending area, a vending machine area where people can buy things like, you know, Armor All or buy a pad or buy a towel. Um, it's usually typically a vending machine type of a, of a thing, and that's usually it.
Okay.
Yeah, we don't, we don't have a store of any kind.
I did wanna ask too, I thought you said something about, uh, repair. Do you, are you gonna have a mechanic or garage or?
So, so, yeah, so that we have a maintenance person who maintains the tunnel equipment. Inside the, inside the tunnel.
Not car repair?
Yeah, not car repair.
Okay.
We have a, yeah, tunnel, and in the tunnel, there's mechanized conveyor equipment. And it's very wise to have a mechanic who can, uh, do preventative maintenance.
Alright, thank you. We appreciate it.
Thank you, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
If I may. I'm, I'm impressed that you're able to wash cars. Sorry. That's the last guy to get a question in there.
No problem.
Cool, thank you. Um, I appreciate that, Mr. Howery. I, I'm impressed that you're able, you're a certified water user and able to wash a car after recycling and settling out, you know, the different components in the water for 20 gallons of vehicle. Can you tell me roughly, how does that compare to a, um, I would say average car wash? One that doesn't leverage these environmentally sound techniques. How, how would that compare? How many gallons?
Forty to 80, depending on the location.
Okay.
Forty to 80.
That's an enormous...
Anything over 40 is not considered a certified water user.
Right.
You have to be under 40.
Okay. And then the other piece, which was curious to me, you kind of touched on it, the different uh, things that were important to you in choosing where you were gonna put this, uh, also known as site selection. Uh, can you give me a sense of, you have 15, uh, already operating, you got five in the works. Can you give me a sense of, um, what it was about, or, or how you did the site selection process? How did you arrive at Lake Havasu City? And what does that compare with? What cities, you know, are you in?
Sure, that's a good question. So we, um, it's, in express car wash like we have, we look for populations that have at least 50,000 people.
Okay.
Um, we have been looking at Lake Havasu for, I hazard to tell you, it's seven years, six years. It has been so hard to find a location here. It's been almost, I mean, I've had s- two different real estate agents. We have been looking long and hard trying to find a location. It, it, the, the size has to be over about 1.25 acres to about two acres, size-wise. And then it has to be in a location where you have enough traffic. And it has to be in a location where you have good visibility and good access. Um, and it needs to be somewhere where everybody can get to it. And this has all of those elements. Um, whereas we haven't been able to find anything else, anywhere else, that met those elements. Uh, it, it's been hard, um, so we spent a lot of time looking at it. We really like the community. Uh, we know people who are here. Um, they tell us they, they really want us to come here. And they said that they think it would be a great use here, that they don't have anything here just like us.
Well, I, I would like to say I think this is really cool. But one thing I am curious about, maybe I'm trying to get a little information, you know? What's your drive-by count look like? I mean, I mean, I know some intersections have 22, 25,000 drive-bys a day. Some of that traffic is people going to work, coming back. Some of it's drive-through on the Highway 95 commute between, say, Parker or wherever, just as a hypothetical. See, people are going through and you have people who are, you know, what kind of traffic counts were you looking for? And did you separate that? I'm just curious.
Yeah, so traffic counts are a factor. But more than anything, it's, for us, it's rooftops within a certain amount of miles because those are the people who are going to come to your wash that aren't going to, are going to live within a certain distance of their homes. So, we're looking for the most homes within a particular area. Traffic counts are relevant to us, but you have to discount the fact that, you know, when you have on a highway, you're going to have commuter traffic. You know, your capture rate's going to be different. So, yes, we, we look at it, but you can, you know it when you see it. I mean, over 20 to 30,000 cars is enough for an express car wash, but you wouldn't need that much. You wouldn't be able to have an express car wash be successful with a 10,000 car count or something like that. I've heard some people say, you know, we really like your use, but you need to go somewhere else. If you put us up in the boonies somewhere, we're not going to be able to be here. We're not going to be able to be successful. And we won't be able to be here. So, if you're going to have an express car wash like this in Havasu, it's going to need to be down on the highway or by the highway. It's the only place that'll work.
Thank you, thank you very much. All right. Stuart, do you have any additional? All right, before we open up, this is a public hearing. Before we open that up, if you could give us a little bit of, this is coming to us with a recommendation from staff and disapproval from planning and zoning. Can you just talk a little bit about that?
Yes, I can. The planning commission, oddly enough, recommended denial, five to zero. And I, I encouraged you all in, as part of your staff report, to go back and review the minutes. Because this is the, I hate to try to paraphrase or to put words in people's mouths, so I don't want to try to describe what they were thinking or anything. Obviously, the vote, five to zero, denial. They all either mentioned or gave a non-verbal suggestion that height was not an issue for them. So, that, that is what was spoken by several of the members and others gave a non-verbal indication that height was not an issue. So, the only, the only other issue then would have been use, the use of the property. And there really wasn't any particular statement made with regard to concern over impacts or possible impacts. The only, the only statements that were made were, they stated that it was a desirable location, which obviously he made the same statement, as well as individuals that own adjacent properties made the same statement. That that is a desirable location because of its proximity to the, to the lake and everything else. But beyond that, I can't describe what they were thinking when they made the recommendation.
Oh, that's fair. I just, I wanted to make sure that everyone knew the two recommendations that are coming forward with us. All right, with that being said, we will go ahead and open up the public hearing. Does anyone have a public, yeah, please come up to the podium. There's no particular order. You do not have to sign up. We just need you to state your name for the record.
Good evening. My name is Vicki Runyon and I have, thank you, mayor and vice mayor and city council. I have lived in Lake Havasu for 30 years and I do own the property next door. And I am in planning stages right now with a contractor. We are in the planning stages of building a commercial building, somewhere between about 14 and 18,000 square feet, which will house Keller Williams and all of my extended companies, as well as any other professional services that, such as attorneys, title companies, lenders, but really geared to professional services. My concern is that when I purchased this property, we rezoned for C1 and this was also rezoned for C1. I am concerned because I believe over the years, even though this has taken a long time to develop this property, we finally are getting to a place where the interest to do some amazing things in that area, such as condo projects, commercial buildings, retail, really is very suited for C1. If you historically look at the car washes in town, they're sitting on C2 properties on outlying areas. So, as you come up over, and this is something I would really encourage you to think about, as you're coming up over, coming into Lake Havasu from the south end of town, as you come down, coming into our beautiful city, do you really want to see a car wash as you're coming into our city? So, even if I didn't own the property next door, I'm passionate about Lake Havasu and the choices that we make right now because they're long-term choices. And I believe this is not a good use for the property. And I think we really need to look at this carefully. So, I would ask you to, I think his proposal, as far as the kind of car wash it is, is amazing. It's a wonderful car wash. It's just the location. This is prime property. This is Lake Havasu's prime property and he's right, there's not a lot of it left. So is this really what we want to use this property for? I'd ask you to really consider this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Excuse me, can I ask Vicki a question?
Hi. How are you tonight? I'm good.
Good. I just have one question. There is a car wash on Mesquite that has building, business buildings next door to that and they all seem to be full. Do you think that's hurt that area? Is it, are they charging more rents because it's next to a car wash or? I'm just curious.
I think that that's a different location.
Yeah.
I think this is prime property and not saying that that isn't.
So it's the property, not that it's hurting the business?
It's just that I believe, do I believe that it's what we would really want there?
Right.
With what our intended uses of the property is? No. I also think it's not good for the city. I think that we have this beautiful city, that as you're coming up over, you know, up over, coming from Parker and up over the south end of town, do you, is that what you want to see when you stop at the light? Not that it isn't a beautiful car wash, but that's why originally when the city was developed, they were developed on different areas. C2 was the zoning and that was that for a reason. So, you know, I would just ask you to consider that. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I just have a comment. I think as our city's growing, I think that it's going to be an injustice if we have this company that wants to come into our city and we tell them no. What is that saying to future businesses that want to develop in our city? If we say no to somebody that's wanting to invest this kind of money into our community, it's going to provide jobs and revenue? I just think it's a mistake that property's sat empty for a very long time and if someone's ready to utilize it, I think we should allow it.
All right, does anyone else want to address council on this matter? And we'll hear from all of the, and then we'll bring it back to council for additional comments and discussion, so.
Yes, I'd like to address. My name is Marty Koeth, K-O-E-T-H, and I'm here to speak like, in favor, in favor of the car wash. I've personally seen these, these car washes in other cities and I can tell you firsthand that even the people there, when they've known about them, have said, you know, what a great thing it is that they came to their town. And as the previous speaker said, she's very passionate for Lake Havasu. I don't, I don't see how anyone who lives here, it can't be, I'm a lifelong resident. In fact, my family goes back four generations here. And so I'm also very passionate and care very much about this city. And the other thing too is, is that, you know, people just associate to hear car wash, but you have to see one of these car washes to believe it. You know, when she says you're going to come up over the hill and you're going to see a car wash, well, you're not going to see a, you know, car wash like you picture it. They're, they're very aesthetically pleasing buildings. And also, they're, all of them, all the locations, they're immaculate. I mean, you can eat off the parking lot at these places. They're, they're very, very, very professional. And to bring a really nice business like this into Havasu, you know, it'll bring a tax base and it'll also bring jobs. And if any of you even drove on the highways today, you can see that there's plenty of traffic that'll support these car washes. And it's really not going to hurt, like the owner said before. I don't think, you know, they ever put car washes out of business. They're, you know, they only come in really here to, you know, to help the city. And they also have very, another good thing about them is they really, they care about the cities, you know, that they're located in. And you can tell that just by the way that they, that, you know, they take care of their businesses. And like I said, I, I've been here pretty much all my life and that lot, you know, has been there empty all my life. And I just don't, I just don't think, is like friends I have in this town who are builders and stuff like that, there's not going to be people knocking down the doors to develop a property with, you know, power lines going right over it. It is a perfect place to have a car wash. Those car washes are very quiet, you know, and then also just the, the way they care about the economy with the, with the solar and the reclaimed water. And I've seen that sludge that comes out of those clarification tanks. And believe me, that's not the stuff that you want to see, you know, running down into the lake or, you know, running down, down the streets. So, that's, I just want to say, I'd love to see the surf through car wash come to town. And plus, they're like, they're, they're in and out. You know, in fact, at the, the car wash convention, sometimes they even refer to them as the in and out of car washes because they're so clean, because they're so efficient, you know, and the employees and stuff that'll be there, it's not like a fly-by-night deal. These employees, if they want to work, they'll have jobs there for a very long time. They've never gone out of business. So I just think it's, it's just a wonderful business and a wonderful tax base to have in, in Lake Havasu. I'd like to, I'd like to see it and I have a lot of friends that would also like to see it. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else want to address the city council?
Hello, my name is Jeff Dadam, D-A-D-A-M, and I'm the owner of Car Toys Car Wash here in town. And Mr. Howery's right. Lake Havasu needs an express exterior car wash, exactly like he's talking about, which is why I decided to build one, oh gosh, year and a half ago, something like that. And I'm a resident of Lake Havasu. I purchased Car Toys earlier this year. I'd been looking at the Lake Havasu area since I was seven years old, quite honestly. My parents brought me here on a boating trip and I'd always wanted to get here. I'm finally here. And I have a plan into the city to build an express exterior car wash, exactly like the one they're talking about. I looked at a lot of different properties when I came into town and I said, where are we going to put this? And I looked at this property and I looked at many others and I said, this isn't the right spot for my car wash, for the second car wash that we're going to build here. It's not the right spot. I built car washes, we, I have seven car washes. Car Toys is the eighth. I've got two in the process of being built right now. That includes one of them that's in planning with, with Stuart and his group. Our car washes start at $3. We have $3 and $5 options. And I've built car washes in cities very similar to Lake Havasu City, places like Surprise 10 years ago, when it was a much smaller community than it is now. Maricopa, which is 50,000 people, it's an isolated community, about 40 minutes south of Phoenix, and we built a car wash there. And when you go into the smaller cities that are growing or the mid-sized cities that are growing, I see as a businessman, I have a responsibility to that community to put my business in the right place. Because our business, it, it has got a stigma to it, you know? And the way that we're building these new ones, they have far less of a stigma to them. They're far more efficient. We wash cars with 20 to 40 gallons. We use solar. As a matter of fact, at Car Toys, our entire roof is filled with solar panels up there. At Car Toys, the technology wasn't there when it was built to put the reclaim in and all that kind of stuff. But we just put $175,000 worth of high-power equipment in there that uses very, very high pressure water. And we made that investment to use less water and get a cleaner car. We offer free vacuums, et cetera, et cetera. At our new location, which is proposed at the corner of Arapahoe and Maricopa, which is over by the Bashes there, not only will we have the car wash, express exterior, and it won't be a full-service car wash, we have that with Car Toys on the other side of town. It will also have audio and stereo installation. It will have detailing of boats. I looked at all of this saying, hey, you know, with the Riviera coming in and all that kind of stuff, we needed to, we needed to put some services over there. And I talked to a lot of people in the community before we came here, people I've known for a long time who were born and raised here and who lived here and called this home. And they told me what we needed. They told me what they were looking for. They talked about the future of the city, et cetera, et cetera. And so we're going to, we're going to do the same exact thing that they're proposing to do, but we're going to create 25 to 35 jobs in doing it. We're not just going to have the car wash there. The other thing that we're going to do is we're going to bring value to the city of, of Lake Havasu. And the way we're going to do that, more so than anybody else will, is if you have a membership at Car Toys or the new Car Toys Express, it'll work at both places. So if you're on the north side of town or in the central part of town, you can come through Car Toys, get an express exterior car wash. You don't have to get a full service. If you're on the south side of town, same thing, your membership works the same way. Our prices start at $3, as I said. Our memberships start at $14.99. This is the case at all the other car washes that we have. I have Car Toys, which is a, which is a flex, which is full service and express exterior. And in the city of Maricopa, we have a car wash there that is a flex, which is exterior and, and full service. All the others are truly just express, exactly the same as Mr. Howery was talking about. So that's my plan for Lake Havasu. Like I said, I'm a resident here. It was very easy for me to find the product, the property that I needed to. And again, I looked at that property and I said, that's just not the right place. It's going to, it's going to push somebody like Ms. Runyon away, possibly. It's going to push other people away. I believe that we're in a much more appropriate location. And with that, I'll just ask if anybody has any questions. One last thing I will say is, the investment that I'm making in the city of Lake Havasu, when I've come here and I reside here, is eight and a half million plus dollars with these two projects together.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to address city council on this matter?
Good evening, mayor, vice mayor, council. My name is Brian Springberg. I am a resident here and I am a owner, co-owner of one of the one-acre parcels, a couple, two, three lots down from the proposed property. And wanted to share some thoughts, some of what was said tonight. I share some similar viewpoints. I also have some differing, differing viewpoints and reasons why I think you should consider taking the planning and zoning's opinion seriously. I believe that the five to, five to zero vote was maybe done, I would like to think objectively and not oddly, and I would like to think that they had their own objective reasons to make that recommendation to council as to why they denied it. So, first and foremost, understand, I don't think it's fair that there's a proposal that they will be putting out a smell like In-N-Out to force you to come want to wash your car like it forces me to want to get a killer cheeseburger in the middle of the day. It was funnier in my head when I saw it. But, you know, think of it this way. Will this positively affect the value of my property personally? I think it probably would. The purchase price that they paid, a nice development, architecturally pleasing, and getting the ball underway. So from a selfish point of view, I would be in favor of it. From an economic development point of view, as a businessman here, I own several businesses and have raised four children here. I have been chairman of the Partnership for Economic Development twice and run many of the different economic organizations in town. I am pro-business. In regard to the economic split, I would have you think, because it was, it was brought up, I believe by council, that, you know, pro-business, we don't want to come across as anti-business, of course. But we're in a driver's seat right now. The previous councils and mayor have done a wonderful job of putting us in a pretty sound financial position, I would say, making decisions that could negatively affect what we are going to be in 10 or 15 years for the sake of what I would suggest is spreading out what is already economically happening. In other words, will more people wash their cars now because there's an additional car wash, or will the same people just wash their cars at different places? Kind of like every time another Mexican food restaurant opens in town, right? It's not more people going out for Mexican food, it's they're just going to go out and they're going to go to a different restaurant. As far as, you know, the concept of, you know, the not in my backyard, you know, just because somebody owns property next, adjacent, doesn't necessarily mean that's the thinking. In fact, it's the opposite of my thinking. My thinking is, in 10 years, when the population looks back at this decision, once this is a car wash, it will always be a car wash, wouldn't you think? I don't know that you repurpose a car wash building. When a hotel is developed across the street, as Rotary Park continues to develop and move to the south, as that all goes that direction, to not have that space focused on the quality of life for residents and a quality experience for tourists, when it is one of the last pristine lots, or I should say, commercial areas we have available to develop. The fact that it hasn't been developed is not an argument to develop it in something that down the road, we wish we hadn't have done, even though it may have made sense for the first five years. I think you all have probably heard from your constituents and even in your own minds have thought, why on earth was that ever developed here, there, or where in Lake Havasu City, right? Well, this is no different than that, it's just that we've matured quite a bit, and so we find ourselves in a different position to be able to do it. The gentlemen bringing this forward not only seem like sound businessmen, but actually seem like good people. And this, so this is far from personal. I, I don't know them from Adam, but this is definitely something personal relative to where I think we should be looking back down the road. Some of the other thoughts that were shared were relative to the zoning. Correct me if I'm wrong here, but if this is changed to it's C2, which would allow for storage units, but this is different because it's a specific type of development? Okay. So imagine a developer says, wow, car wash, highway location, it's being developed. I would love to put storage units there. And so somebody comes to you to rezone it to C2. And you're going to be in the position of saying, well, yes, or no, or the P&amp;Z will, and then eventually maybe kicked up to you. It's going to be tough for you to say no, I would think, because you've already agreed to a C2. Now granted, it's not part of the PD, so they didn't have to specifically say that, but it would be an uncomfortable position for me if I were in your shoes, if I had already said yes to a certain rezoning change, and then I was going to say no to another rezoning change, even though it was the same zoning, but was not project-specific. Again, just thinking forward about possibilities. Another thought was that I recognize that, I guess, a gas station could go in, something along those lines. It's already zoned that way and there's nothing that anybody can do to change that. I get that. However, the reason, just because it could, something potentially we may not want as a majority of the community to have in place, just because that can happen, is not an excuse or a rationale to change a zoning so something else that may not benefit the community down the road. Now, that's an opinion, obviously, you may defer and obviously, you know, they defer, but in my opinion, just because you, it may be something else that we may not want, is not a reason to go ahead and greenlight it into something else that we may not want. And I understand that the Planning and Zoning Commission and council is not in charge of picking what kinds of businesses come to town. You're in charge technically of what zoning, you know, is going to be or not be. But let's face it, your zoning choice is going to affect us, what does or doesn't come in this particular case. And if I think what, more than anything, beyond the fiscal and financial health and the basic things that happen in our community, council is in charge of, I've always thought vision. And if you have an ability to affect that, I think that would be great. So with that, thank you for your time and your consideration. I know that you've had some good arguments the other direction, but that's my feeling as far as that goes. Is there any questions?
No, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Would anyone else like to address the city council on this matter?
Good evening, council members. My name is Dane Hatch. I've been a resident of this town for over 26 years, born and raised from here. You know, I've born and raised in the south in a town, driving down the highway every day. I've seen that land vacant for my whole life. You know, I've been a resident here forever. And for someone just to say that they don't want a business, you know, going next to them because it's not the best use for that property, I think is just very limiting of businesses coming into this town. I think this town has been very hindering of business growth in prior years. You know, I've come and seen businesses come and go, and with Surf Through Express having over 15 car washes and five more coming, you know, that shows that they're a growing business, and I feel that, you know, they will be able to make this work. And not only that, but after seeing the presentation of their slideshows, their buildings are very, very nice-looking. The whole presentation itself of being, saving water and being, you know, just very environmentally friendly, I think that really sets the standard very high for the rest of businesses coming into Havasu. You know, if you look around Havasu in the downtown area, farther down that way towards north in a town, we've got a lot of businesses that are very old, a lot of very old-school, old-style, outdated businesses with all the new technology that they're coming in with. It's going to be very, very impressive. It's going to change this area, that area of Havasu is going to be top-of-the-line technology. It's going to look great. I feel that it's just going to really, really raise the bar. And then on another aspect, with that switching station, electrical switch station south of that property, with the car wash there, I feel that that would be a great buffer for any other C1 or retail or any other businesses that are to go north of that parcel. You know, not many businesses like to deal with the public utility easements there. These clients are willing to do so. You know, that lot does have some challenges to it. So with that said, you know, Surf Through is willing to deal with those challenges and move forward with them. So with that, you know, you're going to have all the cars going there. And if you look at different businesses throughout town, you know, say for instance, down on Swanson, you've got the movie theater, you've got the restaurants, you've got retail shops down there, there's all sorts of businesses that live off of one another. You know, you go down to Swanson there and you go get some food and then you can go shopping. You know, with this area down here, you're going to have the hotel coming in, you're going to, it sounds like, have a future strip mall, which Havasu has tons of them already. But with the car wash ready to go in there right now, that's going to aid in the growth. And then not only that, but it's going to bring more people down to that area. They're going to go in and stop by and go, okay, hey, there's a strip mall. You know, I just came to get my car washed, but then they're going to look and go, all right, look at the rest of the businesses in the strip mall, which might aid in, you know, businesses down in that area in the future. So there's a benefit for everyone in this area. It's, it's a, a big growth factor, it really is, and I'd really like to see it come in. You know, it, we've got, kind of in this town is a, a locals group, you know, there's a lot of people in this town that own a lot of Havasu. This is an outsider coming in. You know, this would be really, really awesome to see someone come in from outside of town and totally change the demographics and just kind of, just break the mold. So with that said, I think that's it.
All right, thank you for your comments. Would anyone else like to address the city council on this matter? All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the council. Does any council members have any further discussion?
I have a question.
Council member Dolan?
This is for the city attorney and for Stu and Orr. I guess the one thing I got even watching the planning and zoning meeting was, it's a great business and I think, and I think, definitely think it's a great business, but the thing I got from that meeting was, it's a great business, it just doesn't belong here. And like you said, we also don't get to decide which businesses come to Havasu and what gets to open, but I guess my question is, from a, how does the coding, how does, how does the code describe a request to change a zone? Can it, I guess my concern is, somebody bought a property where it wasn't zoned for a car wash, but now we're requesting a change. I mean, I guess what is, what's, what does the code say as far as what constitutes, why should we be changing it if it is, if it's already set for recreation? Could anybody just request a zoning change for like, just a P2? Or like, does the code specifically say it has to meet some sort of requirement? I mean, so I guess like, the question is, guide me, what's, what's my job or my fiduciary duty in this, you know, as far as, does that make sense or did I ramble on?
Yes, council member Dolan, and this is probably better suited to first Stu, but I'll take the first stab at it and he can correct me if I'm wrong. So anybody has a right to request a zone change. It'll go through review by city staff to determine whether it's in compliance with the city code or what restrictions may apply. So first you're going to look at the underlying general plan, and if the zoning change is in compliance with the general plan, generally it's going to move forward, at least to the next step. And then in determining whether it's appropriate or not, Stuart's going to look at it and apply all of the requirements of the city code, and that's what you're going to find in the staff report and also in the staff report that goes to Planning and Zoning Commission.
Okay.
So I mean, those are the big general elements that are looked at, and then more specifically, I don't know specifically what.
So the fact that it's here, that it's gone through the city, it's, they are in compliance with the code and the general plan, it's not something outside the, okay.
Yes, had it been, what, had it been not that, then you would see that reflected in the staff's report, and they would be recommending denial.
Okay, thank you.
That, that's correct, but I might just add one thing for further clarification, is that it's, it's a private property issue, and the property owner or a representative of that owner, a lot of times it's a real estate agent, has the right to apply for a rezoning. It's not like I can ask to rezone your property. See what I mean? That's just a clarification.
Okay, thank you.
So I have a few comments to make, and then I'll get some additional feedback from, from the council. First, for the council, the, as the city grows and the availability of land is limited, all of this infilling is going to create conversations that are much more heightened about rezoning, because we really do have to look and conform to the general plan, which voters approved in 2016. So that document is, is pretty fresh on what the expected, expected uses of these lands were going to be. So that's one area that, that we're going to have to continue to have a focus on and go from there. We've had a lot of discussion this evening about the actual business that's going to be going into this area for that type of use. Normally, as you know, we don't have those discussions when we do a rezoning, but because of the PD, that's what brought this to light. So we really need to, to ensure that we're focused on, on the big picture of what the land, land use is or where it's going to go, and not get into the minutia of, of that, although that's important for this particular site, and we can have some of those discussions after, after we talk about that piece. The area that, that I struggle with it just a little bit is that this was just 18 months ago, rezoned C1 and then in concert with the rest of the property owners. So if I, I have to kind of look at it, if I was a property owner, I would have then thought that all C1 uses would, would then be in that area and, and would be making plans and, and changes on, on those types of things. So this is one last stretch of, of land that we have the opportunity to, to look at from a council perspective of zoning. And although, you know, there's, there's other communities that have car washes that are gateways to hotel or retail sites or, or whatever it might be, you don't see, you don't drive through car wash areas when you're going into, you know, major resort areas when it comes to. There was also a little bit of discussion about C1, and, you know, C1 could have, um, gas stations and some of these other uses, and, and I don't think it, it's really specific on, on what we're talking about here with a C2. C1 is what the plan was, that, that's what everyone discussed. So those are, are uses that are able for that area and, and would be very specific. But moving to, to a C2 with a PD, now we're talking very specifically about a particular use. So those are just a couple of, of comments. There is no doubt that the applicant is a sophisticated operator and, and it would, would do very well, but we really need to look at it from a land use planning perspective. So is there any other additional comments from the council?
I have a few. Thank you, I have a few. First off, great presentation by both sides, and I'm glad to see that. We actually have some very lively discussion here. Here's my, my issue with it. We just, as, I asked the question, and when did we do this? It was actually on July the 11th of 2017 that we just rezoned this to C1, so all the properties in there were C1. One of the gentlemen brought up, I think it was Mr. Springberg, brought up the fact that you'll have issues with other pieces of property. There's another piece of property right down the street here that I felt was an inappropriate use for that land, and they wanted to do a zoning change that I, I voted against, just as I am with this one here. The, the deciding factor for me as well, I think it's a great project, I think it's a beautiful building, I just agree that alongside our highway, we have too many buildings that we've said, why did they build that there? And I don't think it's the appropriate use for that land, just like I voted no for other land for storage units just a little bit farther down the highway. And then the, the real big factor that I had to take into consideration is, we have committees in this city, we have a Parks and Recs committee, we have a planning and zone committee, and we put people on these committees to do a lot of legwork for us. And on our planning and zoning committee, we have experts in planning and zoning. They looked at this, and I, I didn't just read the minutes from the meeting, I actually watched the video of the entire meeting so I could see exactly body languages, what was said, nothing was paraphrased, I actually heard the words. And they voted against it five to nothing. That tells me something. The experts in planning and zoning also feel this way. So I'm very happy that a, an outsider wants to come in and do business here. I think it's great. I don't want to send the wrong message saying, we don't want your business, we do want your business. It's just, we just rezoned this a year and a half ago for C1. I want to see C1-type properties on there. I want to see them developed soon, not 10 years from now, and just like I did down the street, I'm going to have to vote no on it. And it's not because I think it's an awful project, I think it's a great project, I just don't think it's the right spot for the project. And I have a hard time with that because I'm a property, private property rights, you own the property, you should be able to build what you want on it. But sitting up here, I have to take into account what the people of the city want, and I've heard it loud and clear from a lot of people, they want the beautification along Highway 95 because that's where people come and go. So that's all I have.
Thank you. Do any other members of the council have any additional feedback? All right, at this point I would consider a motion.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion. I move to deny the request to amend the zoning classification and boundary district for APN 107-78-004, 145 Park Avenue, from C1 Limited Commercial District to C2 PD General Commercial Plan Development District.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, if I may. I appreciate everything that's been said on all sides. Amongst the experts that have weighed in on this are our own city staff. And our own city staff has recommended that this ordinance be adopted. Then the commercial uses down there, you know, they're free to put anything they want down there, I, I, you know, within their zoning that already exists. I'm just kind of curious, maybe Stuart, maybe you can answer this, because would there be any changes they could make to their car wash that would allow them to fit under the original zoning that exists there now, C1?
No, a car wash is not a permitted use in the, in the C1 district, therefore it would have to be zoned something else in order to be allowed in that location.
Okay, okay, that's, that's what I thought, I just wanted to be sure about that. I just wanted to say that I think it's kind of curious, that there's, there's a lot of property owners that are very interested in what would or would not be built here suddenly, when, when the property's been vacant for so long. And while I do appreciate, it's one thing to have vision, but 100% of nothing is nothing. And when a large business enterprise offers to engage in creating jobs, building and putting hard dollars and investments into the community, I, I think there's something to be said for that. The other, you know, and I have to weigh that, I have to weigh that very carefully, because I, I heard very respected people say, they believe this development would actually help their property values and they would make money off that theoretically. Then I've heard people say, comments about this being some of the last property of this type in 40 years. I can't tell you how many times I've heard, this is the last property of its type. I can't tell you how many times I've heard, this is the last property of its type. The reason I have a little bit of difficulty with, with that is because it has a tendency to chase investment away from your community rather than bring it in. And it is somewhat difficult, from the standpoint of weighing on the scales of this, to say, they should not be allowed to use this for that particular reason, or that it would be some sort of an eyesore, because it doesn't seem to be that at all, anything but that. It seems to be a, a modern development, that smacks of proper economic development. After seeing communities struggle with getting the kind of hard dollars external to the community, into the community, to broaden, if you will, the, the space of people who are investing in your community, and, and that can be a challenge in some communities. It has been a challenge in Lake Havasu, and so this property, all these pieces of property have sat there basically undeveloped for a long time. There are other areas in town, of course, like that. And of course, we know the Vision 2020 Plan is very important, but much of that focuses on other areas that we also consider prime real estate. I don't think anybody would argue that McCulloch Boulevard is somehow not prime real estate. And we've had some conversations about that area, too. So we're surrounded by a lot of different areas in this community that can have beautiful developments. If we separate the individual needs of individual investors located on proximal pieces of real estate, from the objective duty that we have to try and move our community forward by increasing economic development, and just as importantly, by increasing jobs, the part that's overlooked is, when somebody from outside the community decides to come in and say, okay, I'm willing to put millions of dollars into your community, you know, you have to have cement, you have to have electrical run, you have to have networking taken care of, you have to have the construction, all these trades, all these actual jobs, people in our community, getting well-paid jobs to put these, these projects together. Planners, development, drawers, attorneys, everything, there's a huge list, the economic impact is enormous. I have seen too many times, too many times, when the proposal for a development is shot down, unfortunately, because of particular individual desires that don't materialize. And so I come back to the very first thing that I started with, which was, 100% of nothing is still nothing. And I don't see anything wrong with this development. I, I think it would be, you know, what makes it so tough for me is, Councilman Lane points out, excuse me, officially, Vice Mayor Lane points out, and accurately so, that our planning and zoning has come with a 5-0 recommendation not to approve that. That's very powerful. At the same time, our city staff have come with administrative requests saying, we think you should do this. If you take those two pieces and say, these two pieces offset each other, and then set that to the side, then you're left with, what's in the best interest of the economic development of the city of Lake Havasu? Not, the good, I'm gonna say it straight out, the good of many outweighs the good of the few, or the one. Couldn't resist that. But in this case, it's the ability to actually put all those jobs into play, all that development into play. It's, it's not a foreign direct investment, but it's direct investment from external to the community, so it broadens the economic base of your community, it increases your tax base, and more than likely, after discussing this with members of the community, it winds up creating synergies that were previously unlocked. The C1 uses that could be applied right next door, I think it doesn't take a rocket scientist to figure out that, in fact, that's what's happened in the other fifteen car washes that have been operated and the five that are planned. So this, in my mind, in no way limits anybody who is a property holder in the adjacent area. But if, if we were to say no, what it does do is it certainly limits the desire of external investors to wanna come to a location like Havasu, and, and put their money in the ground here. I think that sends a bad message. And, and the other thing that's really important, you know, that people need jobs, and people need decent jobs, and anything we can do to help them get those decent jobs, and, and actually put money in the pockets of the people who live here, I think we have a responsibility to look at that. And, and I, you know, that hasn't been discussed a lot, but that's a huge impact, and when you're talking about economic development, one of the components you must not lose sight of, it's very easy to focus on what the economic development means to the owner of the capital. And it's very easy to not focus on what it means to the people.
Mr. Gray, if I may, we're, we're dealing with a zoning issue right now, so we need to focus on, on the zoning, and, you know, talking about the, the land use and the economic development pieces, that's not really the emotion that's on the table right now.
No, I understand that, Mr. Mayor, and I appreciate your concerns, but I would level this remark, and, and I'm willing to wrap it up, 'cause I don't have much more to say. I think I can do the math here, I know how this is gonna wind up. But actually, it does tie into all those things, because this person's trying to get a zoning change so that they can put that business here, and all those things actually, I think, do tie into it. I'll wrap up my comments, but that's what I had to say.
Thank you, Mr. Gray. Any, any additional comments? All right, we do have a, oh, I'm sorry.
Quick one. I just wanna explain, my, my vote, my concern is that it is purely a zoning issue. I do appreciate the staff coming with us, coming with their recommendation, which I see is a, that it's in compliance with code and the general plan. I guess I just see my job as a councilman is a little more on the vision side, and, not that I'm looking to approve a car wash or not, but approving to change the zoning for a type of business that wasn't supposed to be there originally in the, in the plan. And like I said, I do have an issue, I mean, I, I think it's great business, but that it was purchased without being able to be a car wash from the beginning. So I just wanted to explain my perspective of why I'll be voting a certain way. So thank you.
Thank you. All right, any additional comments from the council? All right, we do have a motion and a second, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries four to two.
Thank you. All right, our next item is item 9.3, approve change order number two to construction contract for the Wash Stabilization Improvements Bid Package Number One with FNF Construction, Inc. Mr. Salisbury.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a moment. Here tonight with you, before you to present change order number two to Wash Stabilization Bid Package Number One, project number DR 1010. The contractor for this project was FNF Construction, Inc. The project was constructed between 4/17, so that's April 7, 2017, and October of 2017. The original schedule was for ninety days on this project, it was for three months. It went well over time, and in April of this year, FNF approached the city with a request for delay compensation on the project after they had compiled all the facts. They initially requested $433,000. We negotiated with them and arrived at a agreeable sum, what actual damages were to them, of $100,000. There were two separate delays involved in this. One was an owl relocation, we encountered burrowing owls on the project, they moved in. We had a survey done prior to the project that did not identify any owls within the project area, they went 150 feet beyond the project limits, and no owls were found at the time of the survey. In between the time of the survey and the project, the owls moved in, and federal and state regulations require that you stop construction within 100 feet any time an owl is found. So we had to stop there. These relocations account for roughly 44% of the delay. This is a photo of one of our washes. Can you spot the owl? There you go. So these, these little guys are what we're talking about, they, they make homes and make use of all of our washes, they're everywhere, you can see them. The other component of this delay was utility conflict. This was in Broadwater Drain. As you can see here, there's a pole in the middle of the wash. We'd originally planned to work around this until Unisource could relocate it later. We were going, you see the concrete slope paving on the right-hand side, that's what we were installing. It came to light during the project that the pole wasn't buried deep enough to accommodate the grading we needed to do, we had to lower the channel bottom. This would've left the pole embedded only two feet within the soil, which would've posed a risk to the utilities that were attached to this pole, one of which was Lake Havasu City's fiber optic line. This is a photo after the pole was removed, and them setting the grade in the channel bottom. They had to maintain that height until Unisource was able to relocate it. This is what it looks like today. As you can see, there's a significant amount of work that was impacted and delayed because of these owls and the utility relocations. This time, I'd like to open it up to any questions.
Thank you. Does any members of the council have any questions for Dustin?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Bergroth.
Can you tell us what kind of owl that is? Is that one of the infamous pygmy owls? I mean, I don't know what species that is, that requires relocation.
Yes, sir, that is a western burrowing owl.
Western burrowing owl, thank you. And the nature of the relocation of the utility, meaning the broadband or fiber, Lake Havasu's fiber, can you expand on that a little, please, sir?
Sure thing. There were three separate utilities attached to the wooden pole, let me go back here. The lowest, the lowest two, or actually, the lowest three belonged to Sudden Link and Lake Havasu City, all of those were fiber optic lines. The upper ones were power lines belonging to Unisource. And they took these utilities, and in this subsequent photo, you can see, we didn't have enough slack in our line, so we had to go back several poles as well, and that involved some extra work to give some slack, to move this line right here. You can see, that was just kind of a precarious position to leave it in. And to a secure location, you can see it here, with kind of a coil and the extra slack that we needed to keep that line functional.
This might be a city manager question, or it might be your question, but I assume the reason we, the city of Lake Havasu has our own fiber optic on this utility pole is because that's part of our franchise agreement, we arranged to have that. I don't know, I'm just asking.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilman Bergroth, the reason for the fiber optics on some of these lines is the connection between our facilities allows us to provide the communication between the different buildings, which then allows us to provide services to our, to our residents. So it connects our buildings.
If I might say, I, I kinda knew that that would be the case, I was just wondering, is that part of the franchise agreement we have with Sudden Link?
No, so that's a different sort of relationship. Those are city-owned utility equipment that we use for our own internal operations, which is different than Sudden Link, which provides the commercial services to the, to the, to do our residents.
Yeah, maybe I didn't ask the question correctly. How is it we have the legal right to have our fiber optic line on that pole?
We've gone through the, the necessary process to, to request that, and, you know, it was subsequently approved. So you can, there's, as far as that exact process, how it took place, and what year, I can't, you know, I can't, I don't have those details, I can, I can identify them for you, but Jeremy can also assist here.
I figured somebody knows, 'cause it's pretty typical in the municipality, that when we allow somebody to come in and have a franchise, we make arrangements to put our own equipment there.
Yeah, so it's not specifically included in our franchise agreement with Unisource, it is a Unisource-owned pole. What the city does have is we actually pay rent to, to have our city-owned fiber on that pole. So we, we have an agreement with Unisource, we pay a yearly service to have our fiber on that pole.
Thank you, that clears it up. Thank you, Mr. Abbott.
I have two questions. One of them is, after we do the survey, can we not get a sign that says no owls, so they know not to come in?
That would be great.
I'm trying to come up with a government response to solve a problem. The other question I have, the fact that it's a Unisource-owned pole is, and that it wasn't in as deep as it should've been, is there any concern with that, or liability on their side, or is it just, any concern with any other poles, I guess, is my question?
There are tags, the, the yellow tags that you can view on the poles, and there's a certain depth that the poles must be buried from that tag. And at the time that they installed the pole, it was sufficient, but as part of our construction, we actually lowered the channel bottom to put in this armor, and that just didn't leave enough grab for the pole.
Thank you.
Any other questions from council?
If, if I may, Mr. Mayor, kind of follows on what Counselor Dolan has asked, which is, are you aware of any other upgrades in the washes that we would have around the city that might have a similar situation with challenging poles?
Yes, sir. We, this was the first project of many that we're undertaking, and there were some lessons learned on this, this, this project, and we, we will go through painstaking design processes to identify these types of issues going forward. So we will identify any poles that are in conflict with our works going forward, and get them out of harm's way ahead of time.
And if I can add to, to this, because the process that happened before actually Dustin joined us with Lake Havasu City, we, we worked with Unisource, they were involved in the design review. We were informed by them that we, we were aware of the conflict, and they made the choice to make the relocation. There was going to be no impact to their infrastructure with our project, they were gonna relocate the pole after we were done. So as it did not impede the schedule of the contractor, obviously, once we got in, into it, they maybe weren't aware of, of, of their infrastructure and the depth of the pole, and we had to react, so.
Thank you, I appreciate that, Dean.
All right, this is a public hearing, does anyone want to address the city council on this matter? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Motion.
Yes.
I move to approve change order number two to the construction contract for the Wash Stabilization Improvements Bid Package Number One with FNF Construction, Inc.
Second. All right, we have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries six to zero.
Thank you. All right, the next item on our agenda is current events, does any council member have a committee report? No? All right, I don't have a specific committee report, but if there are any organizations or clubs out in the community that would like to participate and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, they can reach out to the city offices and contact myself or Jerry Bracamonte to get on the schedule, and you can do that via email or through the website. No additional council reports? Moving on to item 11, a call to the public. Would anyone in the public like to address the city council at this time?
Where are you going now?
Yes, seeing none? We'll close the, the call to the public. Item 12 is future meetings. Our next meeting will be Tuesday, January 8, 2019, at 6:00 PM. It's a regular meeting. And following that, we'll have our next regular meeting on Tuesday, January 22nd, 2019, at 6:00 PM. And also on Thursday, January 24th, 2019, at 8:30 AM, will be the city council planning retreat. So that is our upcoming meeting schedule. Do we have any future agenda items? All right, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All right, we have a motion and a second, we are adjourned.
All right, we have a motion and a second. We are adjourned.